This conference will now be recorded.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of June 21st, 2021. Call the order, please.
Councilwoman Hess.
Here.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Here.
Councilman Noack.
Here.
And Mayor Walagora.
Here.
Please rise up for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the public which stands on our base under the law in this court of the appointed justice trial.
Entertainer motion to approve the agenda. I move we approve the agenda.
Second. Councilwoman Hess, yes. Mayor Proton Johnson, yes. Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noack.
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora. Motion, please.
My patients to the agenda this evening.
I move that we add ordinance 21-461, Section 741, Medical Marijuana Consolidated under New Business, on 14th.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noack.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Hes, yes. Motion, please.
A approval of the minutes for regular session of June 7th, 2021. He said, "In spirit, before council, on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns." It's the only time during tonight's meeting citizens are allowed to address council. If you'd like to do so and you're live, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. And then when we're done with any live guests, I will ask for virtual guests.
Good evening. My name is John Gilmet. I live at 616 South First. Here in Alpena and under Bay Tree Service. And I have the past history on city council and as mayor. And I object to the latest art in the park. I'm 32. And I'd like to start a little history. When I was on council, that park was actually owned by M.D. And we asked for permission to improve that. And they granted it and we came up with some sort of long-term lease. And we got, we received a lot of appreciation for having opened up the views. And as time went on, the city didn't have the funds to maintain it. So my company over the last 10 years or so has donated time and labor and resources to keep that park looking really nice. And the two additions to the park, the rock with the bike and then now this southern river fronts, the river intertwined, it blocked the views of the natural beauty. And why should we consider that? A lot of this community looks at wanting to be nature. And I certainly look at it that way. I don't feel that there's anything man can recreate that got me. So when I see a family of swans, the sunset over that water, you know, that's, to me, that's art. And the way that structure is with bike, flat rock and the bike, it's a great spot for fishing. And it's, it's intrusive in that you can't fish right there. You have to actually go around the rock to fish. And I don't, I'm not against art in the park, I'm against the locations. And I think there's a lot of people in this community that feel that way. And the latest one also, I'd like to say is in a spot where you can only view that river. You're not running a parallel with it twice. You can view the actual length of the river twice. The bike is in, in one of those channels. And now this is in the other. And it's the thinnest part of the bike path where you can't really get off and observe it. And you know, now you're with this structure. So if you had a few people, it might be difficult. And I just, and I don't like to come here and just throw you a problem that, you know, that, another problem to deal with. I got a, I got a suggestion. And that is the city donates to this cause every year. And I'd like to see the funds go to relocate those two to a different spot that, that, you know, doesn't block any views. And I think like, you know, we're a lakefront community that doesn't have a lot of lakefront visible. Take Talis from Mackinac, Shippuden, Sherwood. A lot of them have a lot more lakefront view. And we need to take advantage of our river. So it's beautiful by the hot, by the college. And I'm thinking all the miles like that, there's other places for that that don't threaten anyone. And I appreciate your consideration. I would love it if you put it on the agenda next meeting, come back and discuss it again. I'd be glad to thank you all.
Thanks for your time and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Anyone else live?
I'll buy him. Hi, my name's Kevin Ginter. I live at 390 South Lawn in Alpena. And I'm going to keep working at, keep beating the drum. I personally don't think it's getting much attention. I personally don't think it's going to mean anything. That being said, I need, I'm looking for public officials, both the city of Alpena and Alpena Township, which I'm not really getting any feedback, hence my comment that my, my very first priority is to the citizens, probably a little bit more toward the township because of its large geographic area, but also to the citizens of Alpena. By maybe comparing or stating that probably the city fire department, when it was established, been established, been working, I mean, you're, you're making a commitment to your, to your city fire department, where you have nine square miles to cover. Now you're going to be, at least for two more weeks, or after two more weeks, you'll be covering 130 square miles. I don't give the math. I think Chief Warbush has posted something on a Facebook page of his that shows a video from the Brighton Area Fire Authority. And it's actually a comparison of sprinklered homes versus unsprinkled homes. But my, I'm trying to drive home how important it is when you're busy making a commitment to the county for the EMS and the ALS service countywide, that you're going to get caught, you're going to get caught in a spot that is going to put people in danger. I went to the last township board meeting and they're, they had a lady from the F&amp;B Service Company for their water work stuff. And they're talking pieces and parts. Yeah, we got to do this, we got to work on this to get ahead. We got to focus on preventative maintenance. We can't just go to the store and pick up a can of fire and emergency services. You create this, you, you do your due overuse, I'm trying to play it, you do the hard work to create a fire department, create a fire department that is, that caters functions for your area and your citizens. I, I really see, I really see all the way from the time that this thing rolled out and I'm, I make a distinction from when I come to talk to you, from when I go to the township. You guys have a lot more on the ball, you have a lot, you're doing a better job for your citizens. I, I see, I see bad politics raising its head at the township quite frequently. I mean, they made a comparison, I mean, Chief Warbush, I mean, how advantageous that the township board having an open negotiation about what they're going to counteroffer the city for the fire services. I mean, that's ridiculous. I, I want you to help them get out of their own way and do an important, I shouldn't, shouldn't speak so loud. I hope my passion means something. Help them realize that this is not a nuts and bolts thing. But I think I already brought up the mean, mean market value price of a home in Alpena Township is 121,000. That person pays about $80 a year. For another $7 a month, that average homeowner would offer the township three mils, which the township has been, township fire department has been talking about for four to six years. And I find it peculiar that the township thinks that they're going to manage 120 square miles with one mil when you guys are managing nine square miles with 18 mils. So, once again, I want to, my main focus is that we want to take care of the public, our first obligations to the public. I said to you the last time, police and fire services and EMS are the most important. The township had that, there's nothing wrong with the township department. Some people might disagree about maybe how it was run or what was going on with various personalities. I want, I would like you to understand that this is my primary goal. It's the, the township presidents looked after as the first obligation from their public officials. Supervisor Skibby decides that he, and I see it all as bad politics, just blah 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 rhetoric about being good stewards to the people's money, but, yes, sir. Thank you for the reminder. But then they vote themselves raises, they vote the township paid on call raises. And I, I'm not sure why they, who they think understands or believes all this. So watch that, watch that video if you get a chance, shows a comparison between us, or more, more exactly, the time that elapses, not so much the, about the sprinkler system, but what happens in minutes, just minutes. The township had a full-time staff that was available to do this initial impact, either with EMS dropping an airway, doing CPR, someone cut their leg off with a chainsaw or something out in the moonbox, they could put a tourniquet on. This is the service, I'm not talking about that the city fire ALS service is not. Okay, is not important, but it's that initial impact. And that's what I hope you would vote not to continue with the contract for services. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else live, guests? Anyone virtual guests? Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. Pardon me. A bill is to be allowed in the amount of 296,786.81 cents. Be as a council appointment of Claire Castelli to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term expiring July 1st, 2024. See as a budget amendment request to transfer a lot of $8,330 from salaries and wages in the police department to durable goods in the IT department for the purchase of two additional in-car tablets. D is a budget amendment request to adjust revenues and expenditures within the general fund for fiscal year 2021 for amounts that exceed the projected budget. Net effect of adjustments is an addition of 126,181 dollars to the current budget. And E is approval of a noise variance for a live music event held in the alley between Noise and Toys and The Fresh Palette on July 1st, 2021, from 10:00 PM to 12:00 AM. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noack.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hess.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
Motion, please.
Thank you. Step is a proclamation, this is for amateur radio week. Whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcast over the airwaves. Whereas amateur radio provides a platform to develop initiative technologies, I'm sorry, innovative technologies in communications. And whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between people, societies and countries by creating friendships and sharing of ideas. And whereas amateur radio operators have also provided countless hours of community service, both in emergencies and to other local organizations throughout these decades. And whereas these amateur radio services are provided wholly uncompensated. And whereas the same individuals who have further demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing free radio communications for local parades, bikeathons, walkathons, fairs and other charitable public events. And whereas the city of Alpena recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams, they're called, who also serve as weather spotters in the Skywarn Program of the US Government Weather Bureau. And whereas the April Amateur Radio Field Day exercise will take place on June 26th and 27th, 2021. And it's an emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of the radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim June 21st through the 27th as amateur radio week in the city of Alpena. We've got a couple of representatives here. And I guess I'll, I'll want to clarify that the exercise is the 26th and 27th at the fairgrounds.
Yes, sir.
At the fairgrounds.
We'd like to extend an invitation to all of you to come and take a look at it on Saturday afternoon about 2:00. We'd love to have you show up. If you show up, we might even buy you a bra.
Appreciate that. I have a voicemail to return to, someone called me about that earlier, so I owe you a returned voicemail. Hopefully I.
We'll consider this hateful. Amateur radio is the birthplace of social distancing, so just keep that in mind.
Mr. Mayor, my, my first experience with ham radio was reading station in Germany in 1975. There was a thing called MARS, Military Evacuated Radio System. That's how we made phone calls home to our families, things like this. Actually, you couldn't afford an overseas call on airman's pay, so.
It continued on through Vietnam when I was there in 69 and 70. We also made our phone calls home through MARS. And we, we did provide some service. Oh, I don't remember, there was a night where the 911 system went completely down. And Lieutenant Bob Kraft from the state police called me on the phone and said, hey, can you get some guys to go down to 911 and provide some communications, whatever you can do? And so we sat up in the, in the parking lot of the sheriff's department. And we were there most of the evening till they figured out that, I don't know, had to do with a battery or something. And they got, got it up and running and we went home. But we were glad to provide the service too. And we, if you ever need us again, we're ready to call because that's what we're there for. We do a lot of search and rescue. The sheriff had a search team. So we're, we're happy to provide the service. That we pull home and play on.
We like to call it practice.
Right. Thank you, guys. And a report of officers, we have the first reading of ordinance 21-460, which amends the code of ordinances to include the addition of Chapter 12 for blight.
I will summarize this. This ordinance number 21-460, be it ordained by municipal council, the city of Alpena, the city of Michigan, filed Chapter 12 blight would be added. Section 12.1 is the purpose. And the purpose of this proposed ordinance is to prevent, reduce or eliminate blight or potential blight in the city. Section 12.2 is a definition section that basically defines terms as used in the ordinance. Section 12.3 is the causative blight. See that there are, and specifically defined, catch-all number 11. Section 12.4 lays out the responsibilities of property owners and occupants. Section 12.5 is the enforcement authority. Will be enforced by any person that's designated for such enforcement by the city manager. Section 12.6 is a violation section, notice, how we've noticed to either the property owner, the tenant or the occupant. How there's the first offense and then subsequent offenses. Section 12.7 is the failure to comply, penalty section, which makes it a physical severance fraction, which is potentially up to $500 per day. Each day that the property not cleaned up or, you know, but now it will be a separate violation. And then sections 12.8 to 12.9 reserved for future use. So tonight is first reading. Any suggestions, changes or questions tonight?
I've got a couple. My first one is to clarify again that, that this is amendment to the code of ordinance overall, but it, but this is, the addition of Chapter 12 is new. There's, there wasn't a Chapter 12.
There is no Chapter 12.
Okay. Specifically to the ordinance itself, this would be highlighted under 4B, physical deterioration in any area of the existence of any structure or part of a structure which because of physical deteriorations is no longer habitable as a dwelling or is not useful for any other purpose for which it may have been intended. Is this, because it seemed like a lot of, if not the vast majority of the ordinance was specific to residences. So I'm assuming that this is perhaps, or does this go into like just buildings in general?
Yeah, this would be dwellings or any other buildings, so for instance, if you had a dilapidated garage where you maybe had, that was leaking, something of that nature or shed, some dilapidated, that, you know, may actually be a property. So it could be dwelling or any infrastructure that would be dilapidated.
Highlighted vacant building, so I got to kind of quickly go over it, I couldn't write on the thing to say why. So the building is kept here securely. Okay, so this is a vacant building, this is an entire building, where the last one was just like an outbuilding or something of that nature. So this one, the existence of any vacant dwelling, garage or other outbuilding unless such buildings kept securely locked and the windows kept glazed and neatly boarded up and otherwise protected to prevent entrance there to by vandals. So this is just a vacant building that's not deteriorated to the point where it's no longer useful. So this is, because we've had issues about that before as far as boarding things up and making sure that they're not a danger to, to people.
Yeah, and not accessible to, you could have, you'd have some damage to a building where it doesn't make it uninhabitable. But it's vacant. You certainly don't want to be all attracted to usage, you don't want to bring people to it. You know, a lot of people, for instance, to go inside their squad in there. You don't want homeless folks to go inside. So it would require them to secure it. So even though it's vacant and not dilapidated, it's important, it doesn't need to be secure.
And then I, I mentioned it to Rich this morning and I, this is six unmaintained buildings, 6F. Only says peeling paint. And I don't know if, I guess my question would be, should, should we have a more of a clarification to peeling paint? Or what, so our intent is, so when our enforcement, whoever this enforcement person ends up being, knows kind of where we're at, or are we going to leave that up to a judgment call by that, by that specific person? It's peeling paint, you know, like Rich said, I mean, we're, we're logical here, we are. And I believe that. But as time goes on and it just says peeling paint and someone approaches us and says, your ordinance says peeling paint, my neighbor's got peeling paint. What is, should we establish a limit or some kind of?
It would probably be hard to provide with certainty how much peeling paint is enough. Obviously, normally when you get into that situation where you're going to have a paint that's peeling, like probably going to be having one of these other things with it as well, in terms of vacant, uninhabitable, things of that nature. So, but we could have more specific, more specific definition that are helpful. Obviously, if there was some paint, like, I don't think, you know, we would send out a violation notice for that. But, you know, beauty's an eye to go over, everything, it's not that bad, you know, somebody else may think it looks terrible. So I mean, I think we could have that problem where somebody comes in and says, well, it says peeling paint. My neighbor's friends doing, aren't you guys doing something? But I'm not sure what, what specific language we can use that we're thinking. Where something would automatically know, okay, that's a peeling paint violation. That's just paint that's peeling, that's, I'm not sure that there's anything we can use to define it with certainty. Whatever may be clear to us.
Yeah, because, you know, in the past, there've been other suggestions of percentage of structure, you know, 10% of the structure is peeling paint or a percentage of something, some kind of a guideline. But that's very tough to do on that particular one. It's like we're asking an enforcement officer to look at something and say, yeah, you know, it's 5% or less. So I just think that, to me, the other things that I've written here make sense and understand whether seriously damaged mission site, structurally foundation is, you know, as determined to be uninhabitable, would make more sense, peeling paint by itself, me, it's too hard to find. And I don't want to have somebody have to come back and just say, myself, I would rather have it just either be included in something else or, these are my thoughts, it's just, it's too hard to say, you know, it's a structure sound, but.
I don't disagree because it's under a section where there's some pretty, you know, missing, broken, boarded up windows and doors, collapsing or missing walls or the floor, these are pretty major things. And then we have it just peeling paint on the end, doesn't seem to fit.
What I see on here concerning either private property or public property, but I don't, I really see where we cover other commercial properties. Okay?
Well, hold on just a second before you go there, because I just, let's finish up the peeling paint. Because I, I mean, I just want to get a consensus on that part before we move on.
I want to take a percentage of these.
I don't know that I have a specific answer. I just kind of noted it as, it just seemed to kind of stick out to not, like Mike said, it's, everything else on that list you can kind of get right away. This one is maybe a little bit more subjective, subjective to the, to the enforcement, but, you know.
Not only to the enforcement, but complaints you could get from citizens. And we get them. Sometimes we go, gosh, there's bigger things to worry about, isn't there, than, you know, your neighbor has.
Yeah, I don't know. Do you think? Well, both of you guys probably have experience, you're not in the code enforcement. But do we, do we get a lot of issues with peeling paint already over the years?
You know, I mean, you get, most of the complaints you get are garbage in the yard. You know, the buildings are starting to fail. So peeling paint, eventually it will cause degradation to the structure, but it's not something that's going to happen right away.
something that's going to happen right away. So I it's it's tough to put a detrimental effect on the structure associated with peeling paint, I guess. It's more on the aesthetics qualities, more on property maintenance, co-impact activity.
I don't know. You guys want to just take it off? You want to just take it off? We just take it off. Let's just take it off.
Can I add? Yeah, because I was the original one that drafted that. The reason it looks tacked on is it was tacked on. Okay, A through B were when we were downloading other ordinances and putting the first draft together, A was not in that first draft. That was actually added later and it was suggested in the payment. So when you said, let's tack on, I was like, that's exactly what happened.
And it's I don't disagree with with the I think it just could be really hard to enforce, and I don't like really to see anything that's that difficult to enforce. I'm fine with it. Does anybody oppose the stripping that up? And then I'll just kind of be quick. What's that?
Peel it off.
Peel that off. I do that too. And I just got a couple more things and then I'll move on to the rest of council. So the first offense, be notified in writing to remove or eliminate such causes of blighted light lighting factors from such property within seven days after service of the notice upon him or her. And then and I'm and I'm going to assume that you could bounce down to C that there can be additional time granted in the event that that person can't literally take care of whatever it is in seven days. But the issue I have is B, it says subsequent violations for subsequent or repeat violations by the same person, such written notice shall not be required. How will that person know that they are served a second time if they don't get a written I didn't understand what that how that was going to work.
Yeah, they would still get a ticket.
That's a notice.
Another notice.
It did seem really excessive. It just says repeat by the same a repeat violation by the same person. It doesn't give them what it could be like five years later or something.
Well, the way the way it's intended would be, you know, we normally give this question on a solid ticket, right? Because we want compliance. I mean, we're not we're not so concerned about enforcement except on those properties where we made compliance and just haven't gotten it. So and I couldn't give you, you know, a number on this to change it, but I know over the years, building department has always worked with property to try to get things cleaned up, fixed. They just don't run right out of tickets. So, you know, but this was intended to mean if the person's asked more time, give them more time. We're not going to go back out and give you another notice to give you more time. We're going to create subsequent one where instead of giving you a ticket and then it goes forward and let the court decide whether it was a violation. But, you know, if you want us to give an additional notice before a subsequent violation, we could do something. It's tough that since we can't do it, but this is a general rule, if we get the official violators, we generally go right to the ticket aspect of a second, third, or fourth time rather than giving them additional notice. Okay, so if you look at the number logs that are kept, many times they'll say, you know, until the first complaint from neighbor or contact the property owner, the property owner says it's out of town, but as I gave you cleaned up that week. And if we go back by there next Monday and it's cleaned up, that's the end of it. No ticket, there's no formal notice, just those informal contact. But as time goes by, sometimes we go back and say, if it's not cleaned up Friday, we're going to come back with a ticket. And sometimes we just come back with a ticket. So it just depends on, you know, whether the person's legitimately making efforts, clean it up, what are we dealing with, or consistent situation where even when they cleaned it up, it's into a situation again where it will come to a state of disrepair. So I mean, I think the thought was rather than having given another notice, we're just giving a violation. I think, Mary, your correction could be several years, who knows? My guess would be that if it's something from three years ago, I'll be not going to jump right to the to the ticket part. We're probably going to give them enough to fix it if it hasn't been done.
Okay.
And that happens occasionally. I would say most of the ones that tickets are written out, they've been to the property all the time.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification. I think that's fine. I was I think it's fine as it is if you guys are talking with enforcement that way.
In particular matter, the violation, it says the owner, if possible, or the occupant. Ultimately, it says the owner of the building or the occupant that's responsible. There's going to be times definitely in this, this is where the property is. And where does the ultimate ticket go to and who's responsible for handling it?
Depends on the nature of the violation and property, if I'm leasing property to my tenant, ultimately I'm responsible. If my tenant doesn't, generally the tenant would root the ticket. For instance, a junk automobile, automobile was registered by tenant, then it would be rooted, the ticket's generally going to go to the tenant.
Speaking for landlords, because it used to be one, is that in every one of our lease agreements, they would say that in any violation of the city ordinance, it's, you know, we would it would be for us to be able to affect that person because of the certain violation that they don't fix it up. So I assume that it would always go to the property, you know, if they're responsible for their tenants, because I always felt that I was in violations and everything. Okay, I guess we'll just go around table. Amber, any other issues or questions for?
No.
Mike? Yeah? What?
No, just you covered them all. The only thing under that exception, under first offense, my mind goes versus first offense, and it seems like granting of additional time should be B and then C should be subsequent violations. Seems out of order to me.
So C should become B and C?
Yes.
Oh, B and C?
Yes.
It would be.
Go ahead.
I don't know the word for it, but I agree, yeah. Kinder, yeah. Yeah, I think that that does make sense, you know, because we are, but there are going to be occasions where there may be a little bit of that, you know, older person cannot be rid of them, so have to call. So I think that's and C would, yeah, it would be better to come right after the seven day thing. Now here's here's what if you can, that's fine.
Any? Anything? Yes, I said, it seems that everything here is covered under either private or private facilities, but not commercial.
Are commercial buildings private? Commercial buildings are private.
I don't think yours really addresses whether I think it poopses any structure by my own felt.
Right.
So it would be independent of stuff, not commercial.
Okay, I can go with that. Under the unmaintained building, section B, I would recommend adding collapsing, under B, collapsing, clearly, or missing walls or floor. We have we have a building across here, the concrete's falling off.
That's a historic site.
And the concrete's falling off of it. So in the safety, we should more make sure, but it is definitely deteriorating. Okay, and it's been that way since I lived here. It's not been long, 2014. So several people asked about that one. In conjunction with that, walking under the blight here, the comprehensive plan of 2020, sixty-four percent of the respondents identified, they were specific about what it was, but now things that's necessary. The concern is, though, that it has been that problem for a long time and yet nothing has the public been done to correct the problem. All right, so we need to have something that the public can see that this is where we're going with it, or this is why we can't go with this, one of the other. And I I've been getting the questions, Amber, like said, reading through the 2020 comprehensive plan, that was a big part of people's concerns in the city of Alpine. So how do we go about that?
So you're suggesting that under collapsing or missing walls, roof or floor, just add something that.
Just add deteriorate.
Oh.
Because that's.
Because that's what you describe that as, deteriorate.
You're in deterior.
Does that seem fair enough? I guess Rich, Bill, and Denise, just something that because nothing on there does clarify or specifically address like chunks of concrete because it's not technically siding, I guess. So.
We've had, I mean, we've had that right now, we've got issues with the theater, North Side, the sports complex, we had issues on habitat building, so most of the years we had sites, so.
I guess P is the building falling off because I'm in the past, I had this situation where a neighbor's roof was literally, when it was windy, I'd get so many shingles and possible bricks from their chimney hitting my house. And I did report and they did talk to someone about it because I felt that my house was in danger from things coming off of their roof and their chimney. But I don't know that that they weren't necessarily collapsing with shingles, but they're all falling off, hitting my house and messing up my yard if I need it picked out. So P is falling off of something, I guess. I don't know what's the right term, but anything that's falling off, that could be a danger or.
It could be deteriorating sheets.
Yeah, deteriorating exterior walls and.
It's just a damn.
I think anything that's creating safety hazard.
Right, but doesn't say that, so.
Yeah, I would say we had even that term, you know, creating a public safety hazard. That's on here somewhere.
Oh, it was.
So everybody's comfortable with adding deteriorating in that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm a lot of them. Sixty.
Oh, yeah. That's your question. It's eleven. Other public safety. All right, anything else?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all for all the work you did on that, Rachel as well, here on that. We changed that. So next up is unfinished business. This is the second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash four five nine, medical marijuana facilities repeal of deferred ordinance and adoption of the new language.
Some weeks ago, we addressed this with council during the first reading. There was some proposed changes by our members. Just to recap, this is an amendment to the marijuana ordinance. The main for this, the changes was to lift the cap on the community centers, but also to do away with the merit process review, apparently because if we were going to have a cap, we didn't need to have that same language in there. So there were three main things that we addressed last time. Page six, number six, excuse me, page six, C three, also wanted a little bit more definition of capital investment. The language that was suggested by Rich on the meeting is that capital investment is fixed assets, which is an asset purchased for a long-term year, long-term use, excuse me, and not likely to be converted quickly to cash, such as buildings. So that was the language that was suggested. The next change is on page nine, number ten, B, related to licensee failed to substantially comply with its original site plan or operated inconsistent with that, or just said we shall revoke the license. What it says now is that the licensee may present its case for modification of its original facility license to the city of Alpine Planning Commission. If the planning commission approves the changes, then the city will take no further action regarding the licensee's license. If the licensee fails to address this substantial obligation, then the city may revoke the license and may re-licensing from applying for an other program for the license in the future. So it doesn't say the previous language was a shout, if you didn't comply, we weren't going to give you another license. This gives us a chance to go to the planning commission. If they if they comply or they, you know, bring it up to whatever recommendations by planning commission, then they're okay. If they don't, we still wouldn't have to automatically revoke it. We wouldn't have to automatically deny them the license in the future, but we could do that. So as an example, that was obviously a serious violation. It might be something that would say, you know, we're not going to give you the license again. But for those that are fixable, those that take the recommendations, planning commission changes, then we would welcome certainly stop them from having a license if they substantially comply. And then the third area was the sign. What we landed on there was that facilities may only use exterior signs that is in compliance with the city's zoning ordinance regarding signs. So we had a lot of other language in there that council was not comfortable with. We took all that out, said whatever signs you have, it's have to be compliant with the city's zoning ordinance regarding signs and also be consistent. So that's on page thirteen, and it's item B one A. So those were the changes that council indicated on made. So if you're comfortable with the ordinance is written out, it simply has to be okay with your name.
Well, I'm comfortable with everything except the uncapping. So so I think council is very aware where my goal is going to be tonight, and I will be making an effort to approve your, that is currently written. So just wanted to put that out there that I my thoughts and views have not changed on that. I still think that it's better capped at this time. So that's what.
Thank you. I move that we adopt ordinance twenty-one dash four fifteen. Support.
Councilor Noah?
No.
Mayor Wollagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
I don't know.
Would you care?
Thank you all. Next up is new business. First is the fire services agreement, and Chief Borbush is here for the presentation.
Good evening, council. Normally we block a public comment, but I do want to point out that the difficult transition from nine square miles to something more was actually done forty years ago in nineteen eighty when we went nine square miles to seventeen. I think we can handle one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Just to reiterate, first off, the memo that I sent you in your council packet at last Wednesday morning's council board meeting, the council board made some substantive changes to the draft agreement as presented back to them from the city council. They voted to approve the agreement at a four hundred thousand dollar annual fee for service with a four seventy-five cap. They wanted the escalator moved to five years before the two-year escalator kicks in as opposed to the three that we had proposed earlier. My recommendation as your fire chief is that we either hold the cap at five hundred thousand or the escalator inception at three years, not either or, but not both. They wanted to strike the contingency section. I'll let them answer for why. There was a lot of discussion on term, and the version that they approved is one that I would not recommend. What they wanted to do is go from fifteen years to five years, and during that five years, either party could serve notice on the other, they'd like to terminate, which could make it as short as six years theoretically. It's way too much work for five or six years. And so what I would recommend is that we hold for minimum initial contract term of five years with no option for termination, and then at that point, start the clock so that any time that either party wants out, it would start a five-year cycle. So it would be a minimum of ten-year contract. And I think that's in keeping with the amount of work involved, providing quality service to the to the new service area. And it gives both entities time to plan and make the adjustments that they need to make. I believe very strongly that this agreement benefits both communities, it is a whole It is a long-term sharing of services. Township will receive literally twice the staff and less than half the cost. Plus, it will benefit from a number of other enhancements, including administration, community risk reduction. Both communities will benefit from a renewed and expanded capability in technical rescue and special operations. And it came to my attention recently that the only people that I told about that was council. The primary change that would be possible if this comes to fruition is that we're going to put in play water rescue, technical rescue, high and low angle rescue, confined space, trench, all of the specialty rescue disciplines that we've not been able to do, will be able to do with this new revenue stream. And it's important, because no one else in the area is capable of that either. We've just been really lucky not to need it. The bottom line is that if somebody was dangling off the main street water tower right now, we would go and we'd give it our best shot, but we are not properly trained to do that. We'd like to fix that, and not only will that help us, it'll help everybody else in the region as well. We're really neat, because we're a small town in a big city at the same time. We're a small town and we don't have a lot of residents. And so resources are limited, but on the other hand, there's no Big Brother to ask. We have to do it all. And so it's a great place to be. What a great community to have the challenges and be able to do that. This morning, the township did provide a new version of the draft agreement that incorporates those changes and a couple of other ones. I don't know if you've had a chance to go over that in detail, but Mayor Walagura asked Supervisor Skibby to join us this evening, and he can probably speak to whatever changes and rationale may be involved. But you have my recommendations. This is extremely important. For the last six months, we've provided comprehensive emergency services to the north side, half of the delta in township. It has gone very, very well. At the same time, in the last four days, I'm aware of three calls with only one or two people on the south side of township. Volunteers are not as active as they once were, and we really are getting into a bad situation for them. I can fix that in 10 minutes if you would still be on hand. Mr. Skibby, can you come up?
Chief, I'm just going to clarify one thing that you said earlier, just for the, our guests that don't have this memo in front of us, is that you did recommend the initial contract of five years with no option to terminate. But it's on here, but you left it out when you were talking, unless agreed to by both parties.
Yes, thank you.
And that's important, because we certainly wouldn't want everybody to think that
Yes.
even if both parties agreed that-
Well, that would only be for lateral terminations.
Right.
If we agree, we can agree anytime.
I got you.
But thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Mr. Skibby?
Nathan?
Between the two of us, we probably have the answer, wherever the question is.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time. The substantive changes that have gone through the township board and come back to you, primarily the largest change leads to another conversation that I believe that both the mayor and Mayor Proton, we could probably identify with some of the language confusion with another document that we're working on concurrently. And that was the largest change, was the term. I listened to everything. I'm here to answer any questions as to why some of those changes may have come to be, but by far, far none that the term is the biggest change. Thus far, to your chief and all of your staff, and the level of professionalism that they've brought to the north side of the township is exemplary. And I hope that every one of you continues to understand how lucky you are to have such wonderful assets in your fire department. This is something that is good for our community. I hope this is one step towards a future that shows both the township and city residents that we can work together to solve our communal issues. And with that being said, if there's any direct questions that I could answer to this document, I'm, I'm here.
Supervisor, I appreciate you coming. I don't have any specific questions. I'm certainly not going to question somebody as to why they made a decision or changed something, because then they would bring that back to me and what I do as well, so. But to address the changes that were recommended, just with a discussion here with council and both of you, I'd have to agree with, with the chief. We talked about it a bit, as far as the, as far as the term goes, I'd have to agree with the chief that we're putting a lot of time and a lot of resources and a lot into this for, for what, for five years or six years, or if somebody could so, you know, terminate within that time period. So I think chief came back with a, you know, I didn't want to sell a car here where we went back and forth 20 times, but, but you guys did suggest that we, it wasn't initially a 15. You're suggesting we go back to, you know, to a five. I think chief's gives, gives what would be the longest term, and I see this going off into the future forever, to be honest with you, but the longest term would be 10 years, unless both parties agreed to part ways. So I think it's, it's not only at least 10 years, but, but it does show that, you know, we're maybe in the middle on something. I don't have an issue with that. Also agree with the chief, either the cap or the 2%. And I think in our last meeting, I kind of told you guys it didn't matter to me, which it still doesn't particularly matter to me, which I think we should settle on one, one or the other, either to accept the cap at 475, or, and maybe, Nathan, you were there during the discussion, maybe you would be able to provide us with a little guidance, so we don't have to come back a third time. But if we were to say one or the other-
So it was kind of, in the subsequent order, is kind of why it seems a little discombobulating. So we had first discussed the cap and the subsequent, either the three or the five-year term, at which point the 2% would have that in growth. And then we went to the term, and then that's when individual interpretations of a like document formulated some misconceptions amongst my, my board members. And to be honest, some of that language in the subsequent document can lead to, and so I understood the confusion. I also understand the counter at five years with a rolling five. But we actually unfortunately talked about the percentage after the cap and then the term. So if we would have started with the term, we could have probably alleviated either the cap or the percentage. Your, your choice is before you, to me, it's pretty much on par between the math on both fronts. I, I as well feel, after exhausting a lot of other options, that this is a symbiotic path forward for both communities. And yeah, I tend to agree with you, Mayor. Let's cut it down the middle and just find common ground and take the next step. So we have committed, as we've said from the beginning, that we will be hosting a public input, which will be a Q and A. It will be a public comment of misdirection, et cetera, et cetera. This is, if you have a good question to answer, we'll come right back and, and correct it if it's, if it's out of line or, you know. So we're looking forward to that, because this, this process has also been a very positive, at least from my standpoint, as an educational component, because this process has at least shown the light that an ambulance isn't an ambulance, isn't an ambulance. So we've taken those steps, but Mayor, it's your council. I, I want to see that this is the first time, and this is something that since I came, come into office, that we start working together to make our hometown the best. That's simply my direction moving forward. There's questions, I am here.
I'll just open it up to you guys, I guess, I mean, our main focus are these two things that they brought back. The striking the contingency section.
Yeah, if you would like me to elaborate there. So the contingency, that was, I believe, as it came back to us, section three. I think in conversations from the very beginning, it's always been, if this is a direction that we're moving forward, it has always been a direction to myself and our current board that all monies, because these are millage monies that we are talking about, be set aside in its own savings account for, you know, whether it's a rainy day, whatever you may want to call it, as the existing lifespan of the current millage of operations for the fire department in the township, it's eight years remaining. It's always been our direction to have, because as everybody should know, you can never bank on a millage. You always hope that it goes the way that you want, but you always have to have reserves in place for the potentials that you have to go back to about. We've, we've anticipated that from day one, and I think that's the reason that that language was stricken, because there was, I think, I believe, an additional sentence or two towards the end of that section. And as we started kind of discussing it at the board meeting, it was, I understand why it's there. I do. At the same time, it's, we're doing that in no matter. And so does it need to be in the contract? Because I think we're all having these feelings of why isn't it, what is, whatever the case may be. When we get through the first five years and it's just a renewal, there's mechanisms in there for discussion, you know, the fire task force. So we address things in that manner, but in terms of the contingency, no offense, it was just, this is a common sense problem that any municipality should give consideration to. So that's why we, we just struck the entire session, given the fact that we have to, by law, put it in a reserve fund only to be expended on fire operations.
So I guess, I guess then my thought on that is, why not just keep it in?
I don't, to me, Mayor Proton, it's not going to be, I think at this point in time, we're just, if that would make everybody feel best and moving forward. I can only speak for myself.
I see your point, but, and I see your point. It's, if it's-
If, if, if it's needed, then that's what's needed. Simple as that. I mean, that would be, it's not, there was no language in it that was demeaning. It was just more of a common sense approach, which I can appreciate, but why not have it in? It's not going to be.
I think at the, at best, it answers to people that are just going to, by people, I mean, like everybody, we're just going to focus on, on this document, because it's going to be publicized heavily. It's going to be at your meeting, things like that. And they may not know everything you just told us.
Yeah.
So, so this is kind of in black and white for everybody else to feel comfortable that this is what the township is going to do. It's not us telling you what to do. I mean, we're not, we can't tell you what to do. But it's just, I think, I think at best, it, it tells everybody else just that, because the question's going to come up, you know? The question's going to come up, but it's already, because it's answered, and you may not be there. I don't mean at your meeting, but when somebody asks that, but they'll see it right in the thing. I like it only because it just answers that.
Well, and it does add that clarification for 10, 15, 20 years down the road, did they think of?
Exactly. I think that was our intent behind that, too, is we wanted to make sure that everything was spelled out and is clear for futures, because this contract most likely will expand way beyond all of our terms and our futures with you, the council or the township. And we wanted to make sure, you know, based on that experience, you know, it's in there in black and white. And again, as to the mayor's point, we can't tell you what to do, but this is to make both groups more comfortable.
I wholeheartedly agree, sir.
As far as, you know, the cap and or the, you know, I'll speak to council on this. You know where I was last week, you know, I thought for the services that we are currently providing, that we're way underfunded in my, my mind, and I fought for a much higher cost than that. I was comfortable with what we agreed to. I don't, I'm not comfortable with coming back down. Again, you know, to the chief's point, every year, we know all of our expenses increase. They don't decrease. We don't start losing things. So as far as saying, you know, for the five years before we put in any kind of escalator, it just does not make any good business sense or common sense in my mind. We know they're going to go up. So, you know, I think the way we had it written, I think was acceptable to council. I don't, myself, I can only speak for me, that, you know, I'm not really too interested in changing. That, I think that was a good agreement. I think it's a great agreement, in fact. I think for the services we're providing, the only way to start reducing costs or reducing escalators is to start reducing services. And chief, I know for one, you're not interested in doing that at all, you know? And I think that services we're providing to the residents of the township are far beyond, you know, what I originally, you know, expected, but I think it's fantastic. So I guess we had it written as we originally presented. You know, in my mind, I think we presented a very fair agreement, you know? And I think everything that we had in there was spelled out, and I think it was very fair. I mean, when I presented to the council, it was 125,000 for six months at one station, 250,000 for both stations. You know, we're, we're looking at a higher amount, but I was comfortable when council came back and the chief laid out what he could do and where he could save. So I was comfortable with it.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
I will not disagree, but getting back to one of the latter statements in the contract that we're currently in at 125 for one station. It was no fault of anybody else's, other than township staff, which egregiously overstated, I would say safely, the amount of fires. And so Chief Borbush calculated upon those numbers. That is what it is, but moving forward, we did, through enters, clarify what those numbers actually are, which I think helped with the perspective of the overall area. I can't disagree, but to your initial, the terms coming back, as one vote, I, I wasn't really overly off put by anything. The primary concern, and that's one that was first and foremost, and we probably should have addressed it first and foremost as a board, because then some of the other changes probably would not have, i.e. the three-year to a five-year cap at 2% or, or the overall cap, was determined. And at five years, lock with a revolving five, we're going to hit that 15-year mark. The inevitable, I, I feel comfortable and I feel confident that this is, even though right now we're, we're looking at dropping from 15 years to a dedicated five, and then less mutually, if that's what's coming from council. But five years puts us on a path to make sure that everything that we think is going to work perfectly is going to work perfectly. That was the majority voice of the township board, was no cap. And so what is that middle ground? Because I tend to agree with the mayor. This was never an exercise of a bartering scenario at a used car dealership. The services are beyond question. And your chief did his due diligence in actually constructing those numbers. And that being said, the one thing was that term. So if it comes back at five years or whatever, I don't know, this is of both. I just don't, given the timeline, five years is going to be 15. And it's very similar to the fact that you're into your 40th year of servicing as a county wife. Every four years, you're going back before county. And it's always renewed, because you have the professionalism that gets that contract renewed. So I guess, and with that being said, I'll address any other questions for clarification.
Nathan?
I want to say, when I'm looking at the cap versus the escalator, with your new proposal, you're not even willing to commit in five years, so why would the late five years escalate? That doesn't make any sense. My thought is, you need to have that five-year commitment to even move forward with it, without someone backing out, unless it's mutual. So that's my thought, is keep the three-year escalator. I'd probably be okay with the 475 cap, I know it's 450, people back at the last time. But yeah, definitely not, I don't want to go anywhere unless there's a five-year commitment, except if it's mutual, of course, but having that escalator start in three years, I probably would be okay with the 475 cap, but most other starts, so that's my thought.
Yeah, and that's, I stated previously, we, if we would have started with the term, then the- then the escalator and the other ancillaries would have been secondary to your. So yes, I would be wholeheartedly.
For me, out of the strike contingency section, um, your funding for paying to the city does come from the millage.
That's correct.
And whether we want it or not, there's a good possibility that the village could not pass the next time. And so if the village does not pass, how would the township take for this?
Well, and that's pretty much why we're setting aside a contingency, whether it's in language or not. But getting back to that is having those monies available, uh, that we'd have to go back and add, as any millage has over the past three years, there's been some that have been shut down. And then they've had to fund going back and proposing that ballot from which again, or in a different function. Um, when push comes to shove, we would have the ability, uh, at the contracted rate potential, uh, as it came from the board back to the council, uh, to have enough monies in contingency by the time, uh, the eight year millage does expire or as it gets near to the point of renewal, um, probably in those remaining eight years, uh, to fund probably a, a full year, if not more, uh, by some of the early calculations based upon our consumer price index and our average growth percentage of accumulation of millage monies. Um, so to answer your question succinctly, as possible is that's where those contingency monies would be held for that potential that a, a millage would not be approved the first goal.
My concerns that I have here is that you have another year in contingencies. But that pushes you to not quite the end of the next term. If you could not pay them, then what happens to fire? Does that mean that we do not provide service then for the township? Because you cannot pay it. Or are you going to pay it out of your general fund?
And, and Councilman Mitchell, uh, if I was able to foresee the future and predict what ifs, I, I, I'd probably have a shinier pair of shoes on. But, but the fact of the, the matter is, as it's stated with the general term, uh, uh, we would have enough money in contingency. And if that's simply reinstating some of that language to make sure that it's in there, um, how would we address it? It would be putting it back on the ballot. And if it still didn't pass, then that would be a whole nother conversation because emergency services, primary function of both municipalities. Um, we've had wonderful support and success with millages, uh, both in the city, the county and the township for emergency services. Uh, and given the consideration of our, our average age resident, um, those services are going to be in a higher need every year from here on forward as time progresses, as our average age of citizen continues to increase. Um, so I, I don't have a crystal ball. We would have enough money in that contingency between whether it's a July 1st contract or the, the tax collection of millages under this potential, uh, to secure a, a significant amount of time to reform that, restructure a percentage or a potential for a millage language or pay for even a, a third potential if we needed to, so.
Well, that's, that concern is the reason I would like to see the contingency or that, that contingency actually stay in.
If I could add real quick, the last version the council approved included a sentence, I don't, I wrote it, that said that the contract was not dependent upon the millage, that the township was bound by, both parties were bound by the contract, regardless of the millage passing or not. That sentence, I believe, was struck when it came back from the township, but I believe that that is still the case. And I put Bill Piper on the, on the, on the spot here. I don't think it has anything to do with the village, does it?
I, uh, I saw this at about five.
I understand, so.
Yeah.
I don't, well, I, my general understanding, the last time I reviewed it, the council's, uh, I guess counteroffer, for lack of a better term, was that, that this contract was not contingent on the village. And that if the village failed, we, we started a contract that the township would still have to, you know, have to pay us. Now, uh, if they don't have the millage money, uh, they still have an obligation under law to provide their services. So they, they would have to figure out a way to pay for it. I would, you guys, obviously not familiar enough with their budget as to where they would give the money, but they, they would have to give the money somehow, somewhat, uh, to continue to get the service. So, uh, you know, that's, that's a concern of many villages that it may not get renewed. Um, and if it doesn't, I guess, you know, as a community, we process it, we get to it. But the contract wasn't, was not contingent, uh, on the village. Uh, and so if that language was struck, then that's, you know, that's a change that township is presenting to us to consider.
And I guess with the language, the contract is a type of millage, I believe. But I, I defer to your expertise, obviously.
Yeah, no, what we talked about was how much, you know, there was some discussion about this contingency line, which I think I asked you, Bill, right? You're going to be, well, you know how long the millage is currently in effect? I think you said eight years.
Yep.
We know it's there for eight years. We know the amount of millage that they're going to collect is more than. So the thought was that they would be putting some money in there, but they, I think we originally said they should go this contingency fund up in a much shorter timeframe.
Yeah.
And the thought was, you know, they might be, you know, some other things that, that are part of this. Uh, I think we talked about the improvements at the south side fire station. And we also, or Bill also mentioned that, I think they were the trucks.
Yeah, yeah, both approximately.
Yeah, so not anticipating any major expenditures, you know, in the next five years or so, at least unless something, you know, really crazy happens. The other, the other thing we talked about was the number of fires. So what happens if you have 30 fires though? So I think, no way we could.
Yeah, no way to predict that. But we did look back the last five years using EMTERS data and determined the real number of fires in township structure fires is seven. We would pull 20, which is where the first rounded pricing came in. Uh, I, I just want to note real quick that the Michigan Township Act obligates the charter township to provide fire services, either by contracting or by having its own fire department. This contract, if, if approved, will provide, will meet that responsibility with twice as much service at less than half of what they were paying before. So why they would not want to continue contracting, I can't imagine. It, it's a tremendous deal for them because there's a kind of new scale we're already here. Yeah, and I don't, I, I don't. It's not my business, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, how the township pays us, whether it's the millage or it's out of their, out of their fund. If the millage doesn't pass, maybe that things that go so great for them somehow that they won't even ask for it. We don't know. It's so long from now. Um, we have so many things in this community that are based on millage and none of us constantly ask, what are we going to do if the, if the millage fails? 911, DAR, uh, not DAR, TBTA, you know, all of these different services are provided, hunt, or some communities have hunt millages. So it's, I'm not really overly concerned about that. Um, so I don't even know if that needs, that language even needed to be in the contract to begin with, because we're, we're setting a contract for the township to pay us a certain amount for services. We provide the services, they pay us. So whether any language about the village has to be in there, I guess I would leave that up to Bill, this bill. But I don't, I don't, I don't think, doesn't seem like it needs to be in there.
No, we got a contract that they're going to pay us that amount. They don't pay us, and, you know, I don't want to go in with a negative attitude. If they don't pay us.
Right.
Village or otherwise, I mean, you know, township can't pay us.
Yeah. And if, if I may intervene just one last time, uh, there, there are a plethora of variables that are unknown. Um, but one thing that is known is the aggregate of what general fund contribution has gone to offset, uh, those millage monies. And that amount has actually been as high as, uh, this contract. And we've been able to make it work up to that. So there's, there's a lot of layers that we've given consideration to, so.
Um, so I guess to wrap it up, um, I'll just ask you, let, let's start with the, let's start with the length of the contract itself. Because I think that's where we should start. And then we'll just go down the list of maybe three other quick items. Is everybody, is everybody okay with our chief's recommendation of the first five years? No option unless there's both parties. And then every, anytime after the fifth anniversary, someone can, either party can serve notice and that would start the clock for five years. So at the absolute minimum would be 10 years. But the minimum to even, to even start the clock would be after the anniversary of the fifth year. Yeah. Chief, if you're comfortable with that?
Yes, sir, thank you.
It, it sounds like we all are, I didn't mean. Um, and then the, let's see, uh, let's, let's take the second thing really quick. Um, uh, the contingency, I, I'd have to agree with kind of Cindy's remarks and then the, the dialogue I had with Nathan as far as, I think it just makes the community and anybody that reads this a little bit more comfortable that we do have a plan, that, that they have a plan, everybody's got a plan of what we're going to do. Um, so any opposition on leaving that in there when we sent it? Nope. I think three years, 15 years is a good recommendation. And then the last, the, the last thing, I think, is the, is the, um, it's the cap and the accelerator note. Mike, if I'm correct, is in favor of leaving it the way we sent it the, the first time. So the cap would be four, the cap would be 500. The accelerator would, you can, uh, kick in, uh, under this language, kick in, uh, in three years. Brought me kicking and screaming, but I did agree to that. So, so I, um, so I'm not surprised that you would like to leave it as to where we agree, if you were higher to begin with. So, um, I, I'd have, I, I guess I would have to, I'm still where, where, wherever everybody's comfortable. I'm not, I really don't have a big issue with it. I do agree with chief, we shouldn't, we gotta, there has to be one or the other to kind of keep this moving. So, um, where you guys have with that kind of?
Well, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm forced to choose between one or the other, it has to be the three years because our costs start going up on day one. Um, we can't wait five years to get any.
A concern about the acceleration, we know it's going higher this year and then the next year, and it could be accelerated fashion. I know what's going to happen. I delivered the 475, but I think we're going to do it three years.
So we leave the, and, and I agree. But, so let's, let's propose back that we leave the accelerator at the three year that we sent the first time. Um, now we're talking about 25 grand. So I'm okay with going 475, but rest of the council's comfortable with three years. I'm sorry. That's, everybody's kind of nodding. But, yeah. Bring me along. And I think, I think that about covers it, other than whether Bill Piper thinks that we should put the language about, about the village back in there. Cause you said that, you struck that sentence about the village.
I think that was exactly what he said.
Yeah, like, you know.
And, and to that note, mayor, uh, if we just, and I'm, I'm not opposed because it is for future boards and councils that adds that clarification. Uh, I think that we could probably put language in there, uh, that would satisfy this contract moving forward. Yeah.
The previous language was this agreement is binding on both parties, regardless of the renewal or non-renewal of the fire operations in the charter country. And that was, that was struck in the latest version, although I think it probably is still true, but it doesn't say.
Yeah.
And we'll put that back in.
I would like to. Under section two, because that's actually not in contingency, that was.
Yeah.
So.
Or at the very least, whoever, if it was your attorney that struck it or something, maybe just a, a clarification as to why.
Yeah.
Because maybe we're not seeing what, whoever, whoever that was, maybe we're not seeing what they were seeing.
Yeah.
Um, on the escalator, is it, so in year three, it goes up 2%? Then it goes up another 2% year four and just?
It'd start, the way my interpretation would be that four year, next two, 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 until you hit that cap.
Unless inflation is less than two, when it's word inflation. Yeah, it would be less than two. Yeah. That's all we're concerned with.
And I do have some concerns.
You're the money lady, what do you think, yeah?
Well, 2% of 400,000, it's 8,000. So it's going to take us a while to get to that cap. I would recommend the escalator exception at three years.
I don't, I appreciate that, but I just honestly, I don't want to go back to two, I don't want to send it back to two years. We already sent it to them the first time at three, at three years. So now if we go, now we're going backwards and negotiating, in my opinion, that, I mean, if it were something that was really, if it were really glaring, but really kind of talking about one year's worth of $8,000. I just, it's, now we're sending it back in a completely different version than we did the first time. We went, we went three, well, they, it started out at five, we went three, they went back to five, and now we're going to go, well, you shouldn't have negotiated with us because now we're saying two. So I don't like that. I just don't like the tone. So we negotiate.
I, I will also agree with you that negotiating in a public meeting is awkward.
I just, I don't, I don't know, especially once you did the math and we're really not talking about a very significant amount of money. We're just talking about one year sooner to start at eight to get to, whatever the next year's math would be.
Start at eight?
But you said it would be an $8,000 increase.
Oh, yeah.
So you want an $8,000 increase one year sooner than it would have been? I don't know, it just doesn't.
It says every, it says it's starting at three years.
After three.
Yeah.
After three years.
Years four and five.
Yeah.
But you're saying it's at five years?
No.
No.
It was.
It was.
It was. We put it down at three.
You know, I agree with the numbers and base, based on if you save the 2%, it's just a 2% increase. I think it's year 11 and a half, Paul, before you hit that 475 cap. So that's where the first 10 years is really going to be. That's starting at year three or after year three.
After year three.
First three years were mostly drastic. And then 2% inflation.
And we'll still be, we'll still be doing this.
Well, and there's also language in the, the current contract upon review, if there needs to be changes that are agreed upon by both parties, that that can be addressed. Um, another thing that I do believe you chief had mentioned is, uh, maybe a sidebar, but speaking with the money, um, there is that potential of the, the 39,000 that is the MFR contribution from the county. So that is another influx of, of revenue that would be available to you. Obviously, we're not bartering with it because it is in our chip. Um, but that would be an additional revenue stream for the project.
Chief mentioned that.
Yeah. Currently, the county allocates first responder reimbursement to the city at 50,000 a year, for the township at 39,000 a year. If we're providing all services, township presumably we would get that as well. Not guaranteed, but presumably.
Right, okay. Uh, one question, Bill, I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. Uh, we are both locked into this contract as written for five years. At, at that time, uh, we decide we can't do it for the amount of money or whatever. We said we want to get out. It'll take us five more years to get out after that, correct? And they've got that same, if they say, no, we want to have our own fire department, we want, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that sometimes.
And we mutually agree.
Yeah.
We always mutually agree to either change it or to get out.
Okay. We could, I mean, we could mutually agree to change, to, to any reason or whatever. So just wanted to make sure I was understanding. I don't think getting out would be the first option if they needed more, you know, resources of any kind. I certainly hope not.
Well, certainly.
Yeah. All good?
Thank you, council. This is an exciting project. I think we can do something really awesome together. Appreciate your help.
I have to thank you, chief, for, you know, all the work they've done in this and all the presentations and the added services they've provided to presidents. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Nathan.
Well, thank you very much, council.
Bill, that was direction, so not necessarily about, we just. Yeah, we just log our directions. Okay, next up under new business is contract modification number two for the 2019 resurfacing project.
Right. On June 25th of 2019, the city received an open bid for the 2019 resurfacing project. Which is coal milling and HMA surfacing for first act. Contract was subsequently awarded to Evergood Trucking in the model 142306. And at that time staff expressed that we had intentions to request a contract, contract modification if additional funds were available to extend the resurfacing in that same project. Which council did approve in July of 2020 by executing contract modification number one in the model 11955. The work, work projected in this contract modification was initially delayed for the city. For the 2020 construction season as we, as staff and council kind of decided what we wanted to do with the second miller intersection reconstruction because we were taking some of that money and moved it there. Thought we were going to do something with that. Due to the extent of the work to be completed and the overall cost of the project, staff claimed for the first avenue resurfacing to take place over actually three budget years. The current 21, 22 city budget includes funding to complete the project. And staff has evaluated the project and determined estimated quantities for the section first avenue between Baldwin and Ripley. Bruce Goodrich from Evergood Trucking has again agreed to extend the contract prices from 2019 to finish off first avenue project for this year. After reviewing the prices and comparing them to the unit prices we received in 2020, the 2020 resurfacing project, which were higher than the 2019 unit prices. It's now my recommendation to city engineer to approve the contract modification number two for the 2019 resurfacing project. And also remove the 119550 into this year's budget from last year, roll that over and do that whole sections of that project and finish that out.
That was a new model 160.
160, yeah, I'm sorry, 168, 200 was the final number.
That's the final number for the project.
For the third portion of, then you add the 119 that we had last year, we're going to bring that forward.
So this is next, fiscal years.
Next fiscal. So what's the plan, plan, timetable for the project to actually take place?
On July 4th, but before ground truck. But that'll probably not happen that way because just we have to schedule, there's a downstate contractor that has to come up with his schedule. So I kind of am more just waiting end of July for our honest.
Well, it's still, I wouldn't agree, and I assumed it would be. Yeah.
It's, it's been waiting and there are several people who remind us on a regular basis that we did plan on doing.
I have no questions. I will reapprove the contract modification number two, 2019 resurfacing project, Goodrich Trucking unit prices totaling 168,000, 200.
Mayor Wollagore. Councilwoman Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
And Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, Defense Community Improvement Program application supplemental as well.
On May 14th of 21, the Defense Community Infrastructure Program announced a funding update for the community infrastructure projects. This program with approximately $60, $60 million nationwide is offered through the Department of Defense's Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. It was established to assist local governments that own infrastructure outside of, but support military installation. The Roosevelt Group is working with the installation staff and potential applicants to assist in developing competitive applications. And if you remember last year, we did the same, the same one. They changed it a little bit this year, so we're going to go accurate again, a little bit different, different way. The program has several requirements which must be met to be considered eligible for submission. The eligible community infrastructure projects must enhance military value, military installation resilience, or military family quality of life at the supported military installation. The city reviewed options and elected to propose the replacement of the clear wells at the water production plant, which is eligible under water infrastructure that will enhance military value. The existing clear wells are 1922 and 1935 vintage and had expensive repairs completed in 2007. With these repairs, expected to have a 15 to 20 year life. The estimated cost to replace these existing, the existing 500,000 gallon tanks with two new 750,000 gallon tanks is 7.6 million. After several web conferences and discussions with Colonel James Rossi and Lieutenant Colonel Jim Shea, both of the Michigan International Guard. In the APNA combat readiness training, along with the Roosevelt Group working on behalf of OLDCC. But the city's project was an ideal candidate for grant and requested we prepare a full grant proposal for submission. In effort to submit a successful grant application, the Roosevelt Group can review our grant proposal to ensure compliance with requirements and provide feedback in preparation for us to submit these to the Pentagon for review. If we are deemed successful, we would be notified on or about August 13th and then be required to submit a formal grant application in September. Ultimately, if funded, the project will be available by the end of, would be available by the end of September and must break ground within 12 months. The city is working with a consultant currently to prepare certain elements of application that must be prepared by a third party independent. With an application deadline of June, July 12th of 2021, we must accelerate our documentation for this. As part of the supplemental, the city must provide documentation that the worker signs this application is authorized on behalf of the governing body to sign and submit on behalf of the city. Thus, we need approval of the attached resolution saying that Rachel Smolinsky is authorized by APNA Municipal Council to submit a, to submit the proposal for funding through the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. Part of defense on behalf of the city of APNA. The signatory shall have the authority to apply to the, and then actually has to say on this. In course, the signatory shall have the authority to apply for assistance. This resolution also delineates the requested amount in the local match commitment on behalf of the city. It's my recommendation as city engineer that city council adopt the attached resolution 2021-14 to authorize staff to submit a grant application to the Defense Community Infrastructure Program. For the replacement of the clear wells at the water production. Our preliminary estimate placed the project 7, 7,654,000 dollars, with the city providing a 30% match or 2,296,200. This project, replacement of the clear wells, is one which the city will have to undertake in the next 72, 10 years in, based on condition and previous work of our mountain. Through this opportunity, the city may be able to fulfill this needed, this need at a portion of the price. We, we did opt for 20% last year and we're doing 30% this year. They say that's not supposed to give you any extra points, but we all know that more of a match always sets something. So we have some, you know, some Roosevelt Group is working with us to kind of make a better application this year. They understand working a little more, so we'll see what we can do.
And I will tell you that costs us money.
Yes.
And that comes out of.
What's the life expectancy of the new tanks?
Probably other ones in 1920.
I was going to say, is that, are they affected under that last thing that you were educating? It's all on about manufacturers guarantee insert equipment where we've got, it only has a shelf life of so long we have to replace. Would these tanks fall under that same?
I mean, the, the tanks are going to come with some type of guarantee as far as. The coatings. Fabrication, but those are conservative. And you get a steel thing, it's concrete based steel thing. That you're going to get at least 16 meters out of it. Probably more likely.
Okay, any issues to the resolution? And a motion to allow staff to submit and Rachel to sign.
I agree with you on that.
First of all, she. Well, we're talking about her submitting it and then also committing a 30% match. That is in the rest of the resolution.
No, I was, okay, I heard about Rachel being, so that is in the, in the resolution.
Local fund commitment is in there, yeah.
So Mayor Proton Johnson made the motion. Councilwoman Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
And Mayor Wollagore.
Thank you. Next up, traffic control order to prohibit trucks in Bingham Street Alley.
City staff received a complaint from a resident on the corner of Bingham and Clinton Street. He explained that many trucks were using the Clinton Street side of the alley to make deliveries to businesses of running in state avenue. The residents have been also been inconvenienced by being asked to move their cars off the streets so trucks can make a wide turn into the alley. Further, the alley approach is not designed really for truck traffic or truck, truck turning radiuses. And so therefore the trucks are destroying the adjacent grass areas of the neighboring lots as well as causing damage to the approach itself. City staff reviewed this issue and has determined that the Clinton Street Alley entrance is being used out of convenience and not necessity. I recommend the city engineer that we, that the attached traffic control order be passed to prohibit trucks from accessing this alley via Clinton Street. The alley will be signed for no trucks from the back of the commercial properties to Clinton Street. This will allow the delivery trucks to still utilize the area on the sides of the buildings as well as the alley entrance and portion of the alley off of the state avenue side to make the deliveries. Trucks have also been witnessed using the center left turn lane to park and making short term deliveries. This is not unheard of practice. We have already touched base and talked with the two business owners on state and not happy, not accepted, but they understand. And they actually asked for like a, like a two week notice kind of thing, so maybe they could kind of get their drivers in order and make sure everybody knows to not, no longer be able to come in off the street. You know, I don't have an issue with that. They got a lot of different delivery drivers throughout the, throughout the month and whatever, and then, you know, we can certainly allow them two weeks to kind of make those, make those calls and talk to everybody.
Can I just ask a question? Is this the only alley that this is official in? Do we have any other?
Well, there's certainly some here and there, I'm sure. This is, this is one we actually kind of took care of before. This sort of came up about three or four years ago, I think. And what was happening is the trucks were swinging and actually running over the curb across the street to make the turn in. And they were chewing up the grass and stuff, and at the time we just asked that, the business owners talked to the truck drivers and whatever. I think neighbors kind of got the idea to maybe park cars on the street. And, but now they're actually physically being asked to move cars because we have all the way to get in. It's not really the truth, it's just a little bit harder to do it off of state and, you know, they back on highways all the time. It's not a, not a huge deal.
I guess, I guess my thought process is we're doing this to terminate a problem in one area. It's a problem in other areas, shouldn't be. We're looking at parts areas and.
It was, it's just different, depends on, you know, what the business is, what the delivery trucks are. You know, for instance, one of the businesses that really won't suffer at all, but it's just habit that they've done, but they don't get really any kind of semi trucks. They get just small box delivery trucks. But they use the Clinton side anyway too, because that's what everybody else does. So, you know, it's not, it's a different situation, I think, in, in anywhere you go, sometimes it's a problem, sometimes it's not. This is, it's kind of a strange, we've got, you know, a defined residential block or a few quarters of block and in front of it, it's all commercial. And, yeah, we could have that here and there, but I guess you're not getting any complaints about it, so it's not something we. More signs when we have an issue at this time.
Just thinking it through, we want semis on any alleys, any part of the city.
Yeah, but if they're not already, I would, I wouldn't advocate to put signs on every.
No, I'm just saying if we're, if we're already, if we're doing a traffic control order. And just covering a small little section, I'm not saying put signage, I think, but. Some like something like that.
They, you know, they've, they've done it for a long time there. You know, we had some issues and then they went away and then, you know, we actually just had somebody move in. I think this person was, had moved in not that long. And so he's having some issues. It's, it, there really is a difference of, you know, the, the different people that live on the block and the different behaviors of the truck drivers, you know. This, to me, this really is, has been the only block that I've ever gotten calls on for this reason. Everywhere else, you know, they're allowed and apparently they're not bothering anybody by their presence there, so.
I would, I guess right now because of that block and I've been, I've had people talk to me about that, this before. Longtime residents and they just happen to be talking to me and they kind of brought it up as, we would never be able to do anything to help them, but they just wanted to let me know kind of thing. But I'm okay with the case by case, because if we go blanket, it could be really obtrusive to people that are using it and no one cares. So if we throw a blanket on all of our residential, or anything like that, I mean, there might be, we might be inconveniencing someone for absolutely no reason. I'm okay with the case.
You know, I guess a good, a good example is it's, it's a public, right? So we've got, you know, established truck route around town and then we have select streets that we put up signs, no trucks. Because we have a problem. Other streets don't have no truck signs because we haven't had issues in those places. I guess that's kind of the same type of.
Yeah, because if somebody's bringing in a moving van, say, and it's easier to bring stuff in the back of the house, they're going to see that sign and they're not going to be able to. Or, well, they won't see the sign, somebody will tell them that they can't take a truck on, on a city alley and all of a sudden, issuing some. I guess that's my, that's my take. That's why I'm, you know, I'd rather see, we're going to use a traffic control or I'd rather do it on a case by case basis as well. Just to understand what the issue is and then directly, you know, address that issue rather than proactively on something that's myself, that's kind of what I'm.
And that's fine.
Well, I guess in that, the other thing too is that, like I said before, there was some issues there and we were able to talk to the owners, they talked to the drivers and for a while the issue kind of went away. And now it's, it's come back for whatever reason.
I'm okay with it. I will reapprove tra, traffic order one dash Q1.
Mayor Proton Johnson. Councilman Mitchell. Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Mayor Wollagore. And Councilwoman Hess.
Thank you, Steve. Next up is our addition to our, our agenda, which is ordinance number 21-46.
This is an ordinance to amend the city of APNA zoning ordinance, Article 7, supplemental development regulations, section 7.41, medical marijuana facilities. We established our medical marijuana facility ordinance, we invented our zoning ordinance at that time. So this is a further amendment of that same section. So section 7.41A under standards, the change is under section two. And you may recall that we had the language of youth facilities. And really after further discussion, what council directed was that specifically referring to boys and girls football camp. So we have changed that language from youth facilities to the boys and girls football camp. The other sections are other standards. Uh, the other, uh, sections are other standards under 81 through four, and the same. Under D, submittal requirements, these have been added. Uh, and, uh, some of this is really added, uh, due to taking some of the merit due process out of the other ordinance, but, but still wanting uh, the planning permission to, still wanting our applicants to show the planning permission, even though it's not a competitive process. And so what we're doing is adding, uh, as follows, uh, one, the applicant shall submit a plan which details the economic benefits of the city by way of improvements to the real property. Two, if an existing building is supposed to be utilized, the applicant shall commit physical improvements in the exterior of the existing building structure. If no improvements are necessary, applicant shall improve statement indicating. Three, the applicant shall submit a maintenance plan that provides for upkeep of property moving to exterior or right of way. Uh, sections two, three, and four are the same. Uh, however, we are asking council to, uh, consider passing this tomorrow. And the reason we're asking is because you have passed the medical marijuana, uh, the change to the medical marijuana facilities ordinance. Uh, and we didn't want to create a situation where if somebody applied a one and didn't have these changes in here, they could make the argument, well, the zoning ordinance isn't in effect now, so we don't have to do those because the ordinance isn't effective until the next, next council meeting and publication. So, um, the council has the authority to do that, but doesn't have to do that. So, um, we want to treat this as first reading and simply, well, for full vote the next time, we could do that. About these delivers, uh, is a compelling reason for council to consider it. And it's so we don't have one ordinance in effect for a short period of time and not have zoning ordinance language, uh, reflecting what we want them to do. Like I said, I don't know if anybody's going to come in on this first day and present an application for a resurfacing center, but it wouldn't surprise me if somebody did. Bill, just a question.
Yeah.
This one indicates that we'll tell you seven days after publication notice. The other one says 10 days.
Yeah. Yeah, there isn't, we did want this, want this in effect before anybody files in. So this one has a shorter duration, yeah?
Yeah, that's seven days.
I'm not opposed to that.
I think we want, we want council to consider what you.
Reasonable, just to understand that we.
Yeah, we're trying to be right. Any questions or issues with, uh, the document itself?
I just see a typo here. The, where it says I N, so blah, blah, blah. Um, after the word adopted, I take up the word by, it says adopted by at a meeting of, you know. I can fix that when we, when I get the word version of this, or if you want to have.
Okay. Yes.
Update it?
Yeah, it should strike by, it should just say adopted at a meeting.
Yeah.
So I'll move that we amend the ordinance, try it on dash 461, make that change. Um, and, yeah. Second.
Are you going for Anna to make the change or?
That I recommend it.
You can make the change, I don't recommend it. I know all this works out.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wollagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Motion clear.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss pending litigation in a prototype bio refining, or refinery LLC, American Process Incorporated, and Grand Bio LLC.
Second. Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wollagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion clear.
Will you expect any, any action after? Hold on a second, Bill, do you expect any action after this, it's just an update?
I'm just.
Okay, because I just wanted to make that clear to our guests, um, if they're still on that, that this is an update, we don't, we don't, we're not going to take any action after closed session, so keep that from waiting room for them.
Still recording. The mic and camera are on.
Second. All right, it's quick. Thank you all. Thank you.